Standing for the pledge of allegiance. He has not arrived? Mr. Riddick, will you please lead us in prayer?
Father, we come to you this evening as humbly as we know how, thanking you for all the blessings you bestow upon us as a city and also as our citizens individually. We ask you to give us a clear mind and able to do this job in a fair and just manner. These are all the blessings we ask in our name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Graves?
Aye, here.
Ms. McClellan?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading at the minutes of our previous meeting.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Mr. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the resolution certifying our closed meeting?
I have a resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. The motion is to excuse Councilwoman Johnson.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Good evening, and for the benefit of those who do not regularly attend the city council meetings, the procedure we'll follow tonight is to first take up ceremonial items. Next, we'll take up public hearings, then the consent agenda, which will be voted on in the block. If any member of the council, the public wishes to vote on an item or discuss an item, we will remove it from the block and consider it separately. Following the consent agenda, we'll take up our regular agenda items in order as they appear on the docket. Upon the completion of the agenda, we'll take up any new business to come before the council. To address the council, you should have registered outside in the lobby prior to seven o'clock with the clerk. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Clerk? PH one?
PH one. It's a public hearing scheduled this day under the state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to hear comments on approving a lease between the city of Norfolk and Waterside Marina LLC for the lease of the Waterside Marina in the city of Norfolk for a year, term of one year.
Please call the roll.
I have a, well, read the ordinance.
Please read the ordinance.
I have an ordinance approving a lease between the city of Norfolk and Waterside Marina LLC for the lease of Waterside Marina in the city of Norfolk for a term of one year and authorizing the city manager to execute the lease on behalf of the city of Norfolk. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
I just want to say thank you to the folks of Waterside Marina for all the good work that you have done for so many years when there was nothing at Waterside. You guys have stuck it out and hung in there, so thank you. Yes, very much. Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. PH two?
PH two. Scheduled this day under the state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to hear comments on granting an ingress egress easement to Ballantyne Associates LLC over a certain portion of parcel of land owned by the city of Norfolk.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Have an ordinance granting an ingress egress easement to Ballantyne Associates LLC over a certain portion of a parcel of land owned by the city of Norfolk and authorizing the city manager to execute the deed of easement on behalf of the city of Norfolk. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
PH three. PH three. Scheduled this day under the state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to hear comments authorizing the conveyance to LRJ Developers LLC of a certain parcel of property located at 2711 East Virginia Beach Boulevard for the total sum of $35,000 in accordance with the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement. An ordinance authorizing the conveyance to LRJ Developers LLC of a certain parcel of property located at 2711 East Virginia Beach Boulevard for the total sum of $35,000 in accordance with the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement and authorizing the release of the city's right of reverter upon certain conditions. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
C one?
Compute. Consent agenda. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R one?
R one is an ordinance appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of $450,000 for healthy neighborhood enterprises from the city's capital improvement plan fund and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of $50,000 for Hampton Roads Pride from the general fund, and noted this was passed by on June 13th. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson? I'm sorry, Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
And Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R two is an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale by the city of Norfolk, Virginia, of up to $385 million in general obligation refunding bonds. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R three is an ordinance approving a right of entry permitting Breeden Construction LLC to go on upon and use certain city-owned property located at 2000 Church Street for temporary employee parking. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R four is an ordinance permitting 161 Granby Street LLC to encroach into the rights of way of Boditot Street and West Butte Street at 500 Boditot Street with a fire escape and cornices. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R five is an ordinance permitting 755 Granby LLC to encroach into the rights of way of Granby Street and West Alney at 759 Granby Street with two signs and a fire escape. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R six is an ordinance permitting 161 Granby Street LLC to encroach into the rights of way of West City Hall Avenue and Randolph Street at 117 West City Hall Avenue with existing lamps, cornices, and a metal canopy. Dispense with the charter requirements for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R seven is an ordinance to amend and reordain the title, Section 1 and attached Exhibit A of Ordinance 46,128, entitled "An Ordinance Permitting 450 Bush LLC to Encroach Into the Right of Way of Greens Court, Bush Street, and Charlotte Street with the Building Facade, Juliet Balconies, Foundation, Canopies, and Roof Overhangs, So As to Include an Additional Encroachment for a Sign on Bush Street." Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R eight. An ordinance accepting the conveyance of the utility easement by Chartway Federal Credit Union to the city of Norfolk and authorizing the city manager to accept the deed of easement on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R nine is an ordinance to amend and reordain Section 25-302 and Section 25-601 to increase the vehicle tow fees for light, medium, and heavy tow and to require that the towing storage lot be manned with an employee during hours of 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. daily. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
I vote aye, and I would like to say that, I've talked to Public Works about this, but one thing that concerns me that I hope we can get a handle on sooner or later are the predatory tours. Those towing companies that ride around and look for infractions and just immediately tow vehicles, which sometimes can put a hardship on the vehicle owner. I don't know how we can do that, but I think it's very important that we send a message out that we don't appreciate the predatory towing. Vote aye.
Thank you. Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayor, I have two additional items. One is an ordinance granting an additional day of holiday leave to all city employees on July 3, 2017. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Have fun. Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Please don't anybody tell my office about this.
Aye.
Thank you. And Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, I have one I want you to add, and this is an ordinance to appoint Douglas Smith as our city manager. As interim manager during a year of significant transition for our city and for our community, Doug has provided us with steady, responsible, and innovative leadership. He has done an outstanding job in a short time. He has ushered us through a very transformational time and developments throughout our city. He has worked closely with Team Norfolk and with this council, and he's focused on our priorities: education, public safety, and improving our communities. Doug has demonstrated dedication to this city and to all of our residents. So it's with complete confidence, Doug, that we're glad to offer this ordinance. Mr. Clerk, please read the ordinance.
I have an ordinance appointing Douglas Smith as city manager. Dispense with the charter requirements for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Welcome to the team, Doug. I vote aye.
Ms. McClellan?
It's official. I guess we were dating, now we're married? Aye.
And Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
You know, I voted against the last city manager, so I thought for fun, give you one negative vote. Aye. Congratulations, Doug.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Great news. Aye.
And Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Mayor, if you don't mind, just take a moment.
Would you come to the podium, Mr. Smith?
State your name and your home address. Douglas Smith, 1406 West Princess Anne Road. I will not use my full three minutes. I'd say to you, the last seven months have been an absolute treat. It is something that, as you all know, I didn't see coming. I was thrilled to jump in. Linda and I made Norfolk our home five years ago and have loved every minute of it. And I would tell you, this is a phenomenal organization. You all are a tremendous council. It is a real pleasure to work with you day in and day out. I think you all bring a vision and an excitement to this city that's important. I love the mayor's term of, you know, an ascending city and come help us write the story. And I'm thrilled to be a part of writing that story. And I told you all when we talked, I'd like to look back and say that when we were here and that we were helping to manage this city, that is when Norfolk became the most collaborative, connected, and creative city in the country and a city that is willing to tackle bold, transformational challenges and things like the concentration of poverty, things like sea level rise, and do it in a way that will be the model for other cities in this country. I would tell you that Team Norfolk, if Marcus, I think, left many legacies. One of them is the organization and is Team Norfolk. And I stand before you excited to represent 5,000 people. And it's those people that make it all happen day in and day out, and I know that. And I'm humbled and thrilled to take this position, and I thank you.
All right. On the new business, Shirley Kafana Reader?
Shirley Kafana Reader, 938 West Princess Anne Road, Norfolk, the chair of the mayor's commission for persons with disabilities in Norfolk. Good evening, your honor, members of the city council, and Mr. Smith. Thank you for inviting me to speak to you about our school system and our kids with disabilities. Our commission began getting complaints from parents and guardians of children with disabilities about the school system last year. Because of the limited time tonight, I will quickly describe some of what we discovered, but it is not complete and it is widespread. In Norfolk, we call the teams that assess services needed for the children with disabilities, ECAT. Every other city in Virginia calls their teams FAP, F-A-P-T. Information on ECAT is practically impossible to research online, and there are no written material explaining the services. Many parents and guardians do not understand their rights or understand the system. This must change. Privately paid medical reports and evaluations that would assist in writing individual education planning are also often ignored or lost, causing delays in placing children in their proper settings, resulting in valuable lost time in schools. Norfolk has excluded most schools listed in the Virginia Department of Education in private day placement for kids with autism. Our city uses only one contractor, and that one does not offer a board-certified behavioral analyst for autism. This violates the requirements to place in accordance to unique needs and denies the student with autism a free and appropriate education. No other city has done this. Misleading, erroneous information, poor oversight of IEP goals, disgraceful, rude mistreatment of parents, advocates, and students is not unusual. A general fear of retaliation to children and parents exist. If a parent or guardian disagrees with the IEP, they are forced to fight, find financing for schools, move away, or in one instance, be threatened with a truancy lawsuit. Our commission ourselves experienced rudeness, uncooperation, and defensive attitudes when attending IEP and ECAT meetings with family members. Our attempts to speak to the school board is in vain. Our suggestions: change the name ECAT to conform with every city in our state; train volunteer advocates not within the school system to assist families and guardians of children with disabilities receiving special education benefits; create easy-to-read and understand copies of procedures; redefine the duties of the ECAT teams. The ECAT team must not make educational placement decisions that violates the Virginia and federal laws; eliminate the exclusive vendor practice for disabled children so their individual needs can be appropriately served; and create a team to work on these changes that will include family members with children with disabilities. Our Norfolk Commission of Persons with Disabilities can provide you with more details. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you. Danny Lee Gin?
My name is Danny Lee Gin. I reside at 3844 Dare Circle. This is not going to bode well for Mr. Smith because of the fact that your choice is absolutely on mark. I very seldom come in here, as you well know, to congratulate you. But the decision of choosing such a skilled individual, I, you know, wholeheartedly support that, and I'm quite sure the citizens of the city is. I've had the opportunity to say many times, even at the retreat. In the case of Mr. Smith, it's the little things that impress you. Mr. Thomas brought up that we had 46 police cars that were not running, and therefore we couldn't do our job effectively. Mr. Smith listened, and he put 41 into the budget rather than go with Mr. Thomas's suggestion of putting four or five a year. So he apparently is a man who listens. He's a man who's well-prepared, and I think he will make an outstanding city manager. He has some very big shoes. Marcus Jones was an outstanding young man, and he always told the truth. He didn't hedge. He looked you in the eye, and he did what he said he was going to do, and I'm quite sure that's what we will get from you. So I congratulate all of you for making an outstanding choice for the citizens of this city.
Gordon Dillon?
We do have that on tape. You've got it on camera.
Good evening. I'm Gordon Dillon. I live at 401 Dare Circle in Norfolk. President Kennedy once said that one person could make a difference, and every person should try. Tonight, I'm going to try. There is some math going around, and I hope that you still imagine you can look into it. It's a math that Nava Newton, Euclid, or Einstein could understand. Take 2,500 North Military Highway. The city said it was worth $1,900,000. The city paid $5,531,141.45. I know the tax assessment could be off, but not 250%. Then there was 150 Park Avenue. The city, when it was purchased, and today, said it was worth 2.2 million. We bought it for 7 million. Cepsa went out, and Norfolk is the largest payer to that organization. They paid $3,700,000 for property in Suffolk that the city of Suffolk said was worth 12,000. In my neighborhood, part of the homes are on the water or on the marsh, and a neighbor told me he wanted to build a shed. City says, "No, you can't do it. You've got to be 100 foot away from the marsh or the water." And three blocks away, guess what we have? A blockbuster apartment building right on the marsh, and the marsh grass is growing up right beside it. The city, in the past, Mr. Mayor, has used the electrician's building for one. They had city agencies in there and a modest rent. They took those people out of that building and sent them into a new building so they would be the anchor. And what better anchor could you have than something financed by the government? I think, this is serious stuff. I think you ought to get the FBI or the state police to investigate this. Don't go to Mr. Underwood. I've already been to him. He's not looking. He doesn't want any of your ideas, any suggestions. But none of you and none of these people in this audience can turn $12,000 into $3,700,000. Or you couldn't take 1.9 million and turn it into almost 6 million. And that, Mr. Vice Mayor, is a real can of worms. If you ever investigate that, you're going to find out that the people of Norfolk and you financed that deal. We co-signed a note. And this is serious stuff. And I think the city attorney has told you about the ramifications of the independence case. When the independence case went to the Supreme Court, that's when the insurance went through the roof. That was in Portrush, Virginia Beach, all throughout the country. You couldn't afford the insurance anymore. And I think if you don't know the ramifications, you really ought to ask the city attorney. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, welcome. Number two, the city council has gotten more beautiful since these young ladies have joined the city council. Last time we had a city councilwoman here was Betty Howell. Anyway, my problem is...
Where's Dawn Heston?
Betty Howell, yes. My problem is, is it seemed like we've kind of got shortchanged in the last council meeting when the council decided to make people that had 25 years or older get a pension increase. I worked for the city from '75 to '86. I got tired of the bureaucracy, so I retired. It would be greatly appreciated if y'all could think of us people. We had to have a minimum of 10 years service before we get retirement. Had to be 60. I got my 10 years in as a security guard for all the city buildings. And I enjoyed my work, and I think that the city council needs to reconsider us because we haven't had a pay raise in going on almost 10 years. And it would be greatly appreciated if you could give us a little bit of the money that the city is getting from Waterside. And again, like I say, it's good to have you here and it's good to see all these beautiful young ladies on the council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
And council people. My name is Mary Simpson-Jones. I live at 7505 Paul and Court. I came before you before about the fall I headed at Boogaty Washington High School. I saw the mayor give the city attorney my telephone number to call, which he delegated to another associate. When I got the response back, the associate told me, "Come to the office and give a written statement." I gave a written statement, and when I received her written statement, I was not pleased with it, so I rebutted. And when I rebutted, it was not pleasing. Mr. Pisco, your staff said that an accident, that the staff at Boogaty Washington said it was an accident. An accident can occur at any time. Who knows when we're going to be in an accident? From this fall, I had left hip replacement on March 27th. On, when the left hip got right, the right hip started giving out. So I will have right hip replacement on the 3rd, and my birthday is the 4th of July. So I would be getting a new hip for my birthday. But I felt as though Mr. Pisco did a poor, pissed job in researching this. As you know, people went to the school board about Boogaty Washington High School. The custodian fired. They did not do the placement. I feel like I should be granted court because I haven't been able to work in a year. I haven't been able to live my life the way I need to. I haven't been able to attend some of the functions the mayor has given, and the ones he has given has been awesome. And as Dr. Whibley know, I majority of the time attend everything that I can to get knowledge of the city. I never knew I would be a handicapped disability person with a thing on it. It takes me long to do things. My boys have to help me, but they cannot do so much since I'm a woman. And I feel like Mr. Pisco could have done a better job in researching what had happened to me. But it's really observed that you could write a letter for Anthony Burford and not give me just cause, and I was not found guilty of anything. That shows me that if you're not in the city or if you're not a city government, you don't get any recognition. But I want to let you know, as long as God give me the breath in my body, I will fight for my rights. And as all of you on council know who has been here, I have. for my rights. And as all of you on council know who has been here, I have. I have been here, and they have done things, but I have come back. So I have given each one of you and my councilpeople in my area the letter that I have written to you. And I definitely would like a response, and I definitely would like for you to go back and look at the school board meeting to see how Bogota T. is in such a mess that Bruce Smith even talked about me falling through the bleachers. And many lawyers have approached me about it. But our benefit of the doubt, with our mayor, I give it consideration because our city should treat our people just like it treats you. Thank you.
Thank you. James, welcome.
Good afternoon, council. I'm James Charman Jr. I reside at 5503 Barn Harlow. And basically, I did not come to complain or point my finger at you. I came to solicit your help and your diligence in a matter that concerns me. I'm a concerned citizen. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a dad. Most importantly, I'm a father. I wanted to speak to you about the five schools: Roughnur, Southside STEM Academy, and as of the school board last Wednesday, Bogota T. Washington. And first, I would like to say thanks to Councilman Riddick. He showed up. He was there. Maybe he can do a decent job of briefing y'all what went on in the council meeting, I mean, school board meeting. But basically, we were shown a video of the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood and some of the other more affluent schools, not throwing any shade on them. The kids were introduced to Commonwealth attorney, defense attorneys, lawyers, and they had opportunity to do mock trials and that type of thing. The thing that perplexes me is simply our kids, in some cases, our grandkids, are our greatest seed into the future. And seeds need water and sunlight to come up. It was apparent after the school board meeting that certain schools, those seeds receive much sunlight and water, and I'm happy for those schools. But in the more poverty-stricken, median and low-income schools, those areas, those seeds seem to lay in the dirt. I know council has a full plate. I know people are usually standing up there asking you for money or complaining. I didn't come to do any of that. I just came to ask for your diligence and your influence in checking the school board with respect to the way they do business. Is something wrong if the school board has to fire or demote five principals at a time? And we were unable, as a group, standing room only, hall both conference rooms, first floor, on last week. We were unable to get a solid answer as to what they were planning to do. I thank you for your time, and thank you for listening. Again, I would ask for your diligence and your influence in helping us through this matter at Bogota T. also, which is my alma mater. I think the factory turned out somehow a decent fruit.
Sir, I just wanted to help you correct something real quick. Every middle school in Norfolk participated in the courtroom law project. The video that you saw were just the final two schools that made it to the final round after judges evaluated them. Academy for Discovery at Lakewood was not initially included in that. The principal of the school had the fight to get them included because they were left off and actually found the lawyers so that the kids could participate in that program. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware that every school, Roughnur, Zaya Garden, every middle school in Norfolk was part of it. I'm assuming that Campisello wasn't part of it because they're not considered a middle school yet because they only have a sixth grade. So once they develop their program, I'm sure they'll get included, and we can ask about that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm somewhat aware of that. I'm just, this is my seed.
Sure.
This seed deserves water and sunlight, too. That's all I'm looking for.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ellis, did you sign up? I didn't see your slip. Okay. You good?
You okay, Ellis?
All right. So before we adjourn, one of our colleagues had a birthday on yesterday, and she does not want any recognition. But yesterday, June 26, Dr. Terry Whibley had And I will let her tell you the milestone, but she was happy that she made a milestone. So Terry, from all of us, happy birthday.
Shall we sing "Happy Birthday"?
Yeah. But more importantly, I'd like to thank the gentleman that noted the young women up here on the stage. He definitely made my day after yesterday.
All right. Counselors adjourn.
Shall we sing "Happy Birthday"?
You can sing "Happy Birthday".